The city council meeting for the city of Manona for Monday, November 16, 2015. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Bussey.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here. Please rise. But before we do the pledge allegiance, I just think it would be appropriate this evening if we could have a moment of reflection for our nearest neighbor, Pat Macacy, the village president and businessman and longtime Manona resident, passed away unexpectedly this weekend. So if we could just spend a couple of seconds on some thought towards Pat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the November 2nd and November 4th meeting?
No motion.
Second.
Motion in second. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The minutes have been approved. Item D is the appearances section. And the following names that I'm going to read off have all registered against budget amendments three and four this evening. These are all registered against budget amendments three and four. First, Robert Nelson, 302 Starry Avenue.
It's actually four. They don't have the... They don't have the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll correct these for you.
Four and five.
Four and five, yeah. So, does the clerk have that?
Yes.
Because of an addition in the budget, the numbering changed, so call us if we didn't have them numbered right for you. But so it's four and five. Robert Nelson, 302 Starry Avenue. Chris Verneig, 5211 Schluter Road. Glenn Linsmeyer, 3330 Signal Cow Road. McFarland. Alex Baden.
Bodine.
Bodine? Bodine? I'm sorry. Alex Bodine, 6217 Adobe Way. Dan Eklaff, 5408 McKenna Road. Brian Zwettler. Your address, Brian? Jessica Barlow, 6313 Ford Street. Brett Hayden, 4714 Splint Road. Joseph Miller, 6004 Sylvan Lane. Michael Hartman, 6312 Ford Street. Those were all registered against amendments four and five this evening. Registering all the following wish to speak. First is Larry Reed, 5602 Winaco Road, would like to speak in favor of the fire department's staffing. Mr. Reed? Larry will be followed by Mary Ann Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak in favor of adding the positions over time to the Manona Fire Department for staffing purposes and for better response. Just to let you know, I was a member of the fire department for 30 years. For five years, I was one of the paid employees of the department. In the following 25 years, I was a volunteer. To put food on the table, I worked for Wisconsin Emergency Management for 28 years. And I was involved in disaster planning, response, and recovery for any kind of disaster issue that you could imagine: floods, hazardous materials, terrorism. And I worked with officials at the local, state, county, national, and international level on those planning activities. And I've seen response capability have to be implemented from the very lowest level of government to the highest level of government. Over time, there's been a lot of change in what fire services have had to deal with. When I was first hired at the department, we had about 35 members, and they all lived in the city of Manona. And we could count on 20 to 25 people at every fire call. There were 70 people on the EMS. And we could always count on having a full EMS crew for every call. And the world's changed since then. We have more two families or two income earners in every family. The training requirements for fire and EMS have gone up tremendously. Manona's moved from EMS basic to paramedic level of coverage. And that's a really big leap in terms of coverage and responsibility in the service that we can provide to the community. In my opinion, we should have had this position added several years ago. I'm also a member of the Public Safety Commission here in the city, and I voted in favor of adding those positions over time. There are a number of reasons why I think it's important. In addition to providing service to the public, there's a safety issue and a response issue involved with this. If we have two paid people in the station, and they go out on an ambulance call, there's no one left to take out that next engine or the first engine to a fire call. And it's not likely that we're going to have as many people show up, especially during the daytime, the way we did in the past. When I was hired on the fire department, we had four or five people on the city crew who were members of the fire department and carried pagers. And whenever there was a fire call during the day, they would respond. When you get to a fire, you have to have one person to operate the truck at the pump, and you have to have at least two people to make entry into a structure. And that's for solid safety reasons. You always put two people in there. They come out, and you put two more people in. With the loss of the fire department at Blooming Grove, that really restricts our mutual aid that we could get from them. We're not going to be able to count on Madison that much because they've now picked up Blooming Grove's responsibilities, and they're busy with that. And then when you look at how the city has changed, we've added multi-story condominiums on Manona Drive. We just added a new multi-story apartment building across from Lakehead Shopping Center. We have a four- or five-story apartment building on Broadway at Triesta. And these are different types of structures that you have to respond to. It's much more complicated and dangerous than a single-family residence. So for these reasons, I support adding that position. I'll add that I also supported adding a 20th position to the police department. So that's what I would like you guys to take into account as you hold on that measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next is Mary Ann Reed, who is registered to speak in favor of the fire department budget, followed by Brendan Cornell.
Mary Ann Reed, 5602 Winaco Road. Yes, Larry's my husband. I wanted to speak for two reasons tonight, not only in support of the fire department, but also I was a citizen member on the ad hoc committee, and rumor has it that some people were wondering, was Dex stacked or whatever? You can be your own judge of that. I started as a volunteer with Manona EMS at their beginning and volunteered with them for 17 years, was one of the co-training directors for 13 years. Also, in my 39-year career in nursing, 31 of those years were spent as an emergency department nurse. During that time, I also served on two state expert panels. One of them was on the treatment of contaminated patients that involved City of Milwaukee Fire, hospitals from all over the state, military experts on this panel. The other one was on disaster ethics, which was a statewide panel on both responders' duty to the community and the community's duty to responders in a disaster situation. I volunteered to be on the committee when I heard there was an opening for a citizen member because I wanted the citizen to be someone who understood that it takes more than one person driving a truck to a fire scene to fight a fire. I wanted them to understand that actually when you're hanging on to the nozzle or the hose, it's two people against that pressure. I mean, it will knock you backwards. You need somebody at the pump panel to be watching them pump. And I thought a citizen that didn't have that kind of background or has never been in a drill involved with some of those things probably would have a longer time trying to get up to speed to understand just what the rigors are when you're responding to an actual call. I wanted so much to be on the committee who understands what it takes to respond to a hazardous materials incident. And yeah, I know there's a special hazmat team, but when there's an accident on the belt line, it's our fire department, it's our police department handling that until the specialized team gets there. And for keeping themselves safe, keeping the rest of the population safe, and keeping the environment safe, takes a lot of extra specialized training. And it's pretty labor-intensive. It takes a lot of people to fill all those roles. So I'm in favor of adding to the career staff for the fire department. And not to be redundant, but the sites and the complexity of the buildings have changed over the years. Both residential and commercial buildings are bigger, more complex in their construction. The building materials have changed over the years. The byproducts of combustion when something catches fire are much more hazardous. The smoke and the fumes are much more hazardous to the people when the furniture, the rugs, and so on are burning than it was in the 1950s when most of the structures were wood, the furniture was cotton and wool. We talked about the progression of EMS from the beginning, back when the service started, to now even for basic EMT, the textbook is now three times the size of the textbook was when I took my EMT class. Hazardous materials is now part of it: bloodborne pathogen, infection control. And we've gone to a higher level of service, which involves needing to have even more knowledge and more skills to better take care of the population. And the citizens expect that higher level of care of our providers. So Manona needs to invest in its emergency services. I know there are many other worthy things on the budget. I know that it might look in future years that we may need to make a case and go to the voters because of the levy limits. But we really need to up our game to keep up with the changes. The volunteers have been wonderful in the past, and they are wonderful now, and they are a very important part of this department. But the volunteers cannot do it alone, and therefore I urge that you add the extra career staffing positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brendan Cornell, 825 Callisto Drive, who would like to speak against budget amendments four and five, and would also like to register against those same budget amendments. He will be followed by Pat Marsh.
My name is Brendan Cornell. I'm one of the career staff with the fire department. And I'm just here to make it brief and just wanted to talk a little bit about just kind of my strong feelings on why these positions are necessary. I was one of the members on the ad hoc committee and did a lot of work and a lot of research in our data and our numbers, looking at the last two years and experiencing those frequencies of those calls where you do get that call where it's the middle of the night, and it's a CO alarm, and one person's on scene with you. And you... We have three people there for two vehicles, which is normally staffing should be four people on an engine and two people on an ambulance. So it's unfortunate that that does happen occasionally. And with this increase in staffing, just guaranteeing that the appropriate amount of people for safety of the public and safety of firefighters is on that vehicle and will definitely benefit the city. Part of that staffing plan, I believe, is a very modest plan, and that was a modest plan with a budget in mind, knowing that budgets are tight. I believe that if we were to do a $20,000 study, a staffing study, I would guarantee that it's going to ask for more than four full-time personnel and pay it on premise. With that, again, I understand that this is a tough decision, but I feel it's the right one, and it's one that I think the public can get behind. So I just think it's really important that we guarantee that that engine has staffing and gets on scene in appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker, unless there's somebody else who needs to register, is Pat Marsh, 1010 Progressive Lane. Pat would like to speak in favor of the budget amendment eliminating the full-time, one full-time firefighter, and would like to speak against the 9.9% increase for police lieutenants and the 7.82% budget increase. Pat?
Yeah, I guess let me start by saying that the reason why I'm going to speak to three topics is for one reason. That is, you know, you're looking at a budget increase that isn't palatable. You're looking at a budget increase of 7.82%. Manona is, by percentage, the oldest community in Dane County. That means a lot of the older residents are on fixed incomes. This year, the majority of the seniors out there are getting 0% increase in Social Security. Putting a 7.82% budget increase into their laps goes a long way towards vacating a lot of those homes out there, putting those people out of their homes. And, you know, I just think that's really unbelievable. I've never seen, since I've been here, 7.82% increase. Maybe I'm missing something, but... To come forth with that kind of budget increase in a time where we're just getting out of a huge financial crisis as a country, we're seeing these stopgaps on seniors, it's really just not palatable. And I'm shocked that this was brought forth by the mayor. 7.82%. The, you know, the other items that were discussed, the police officer and the fire chief, who isn't for public safety? I mean, I want them there, too, if something happens to my family or myself. But the bottom line is that budget increase, we can't stomach that at this point in time. You know, I really can't believe... I guess I can believe it because I've been here eight years, and no one shows up to these budget meetings anyway. But only people out here are in favor of these budget increases? That's a little ridiculous. But, you know, everyone's in favor of having a well-paid, well-equipped public safety department, police and fire, and I'm one of those also. But adding another firefighter at this point in time, I just don't think it's something that could be done. It's not something that was well-thought-out, in my opinion. There was a few meetings, I believe three, three meetings. And any study that you do in terms of staffing levels by a consultant, any study that comes back by that profession is going to tell you to increase staffing. I've seen a lot of them. So, I mean, our fire department does a great job. Nothing against them. It's just a financial decision at this point in time that you're faced with. The other issue, 9.91% for police lieutenants. And the justification is, is there's only a 6% gap between the sergeants and the lieutenants beginning in 2016. What is the magic number? Does it have to be 12% gap between the sergeants and lieutenants? Can it be two? Can it be three? I don't know. There is a gap. And the reason the gap's narrowed is because this body decided to increase the sergeant's pay last year by about 8%, if I recall. So that's why that gap's narrowed. Again, I mean, we're talking about $13,000 or $14,000 for these two positions, but you're increasing two staff levels' positions by 9.91%. And the other hard-working members of the community and of our city staff are getting two or two and a half. I didn't read what that was, but... That's just not a fair distribution of funds among the staff at City Hall or any of our buildings. So those are the reasons I'm opposed to those two items, the budget and the salary increase for the lieutenants. And I'm in favor of the budget amendment brought forth by Alder Wood and Alder Spate in regards to the firefighters eliminating the full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to register in favor or against any of the amendments this evening? Last call for dog parks. No, no, no one's taking that. All right.
Wrong budget.
Pardon?
Wrong budget.
I was hoping it'd work it into operating. We'll close the appearances section, then. Item E is a public hearing to receive public input, which we've received. Item E is consent agenda, approval of applications for 2015/16 operators' licenses. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second. Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Licenses have been approved. Item G, council action items, number one under unfinished business is consideration of Resolution 15-11-2056, amending Chapter 1, Section N of the Manona Personnel Policy Manual regarding residency in Chapter 16, Section 1 regarding health insurance opt-out, brought forth by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Mark?
This was, we talked about last meeting. Basically, the opt-out is if you don't take health insurance, currently you're getting 90% of the single premium. This changes the policy manual to get $250 per month, which is a decrease overall about $3,000, I think, $3,300 roughly. We are the only ones besides McFarland and the county from... Two people didn't respond, which was Madison, I believe, Middleton, but everybody else in the county responded. Us and McFarland both offer opt-out. Theirs is basically $292 per month, I believe. So this is changing, it's in the current budget right now. It's part of the... It's part of the 2016 budget is in those numbers. We are aware that this is probably going to cause some grievance. We are aware that they already told us they are going to grieve these things, but...
Police Department.
Police Department. And I believe the fire department talked about doing it, too. They technically can't really grieve until it actually happens, so it'd be the first paychecked in January. So we are aware of that. We have... The attorney was here last meeting, talked about his feelings on that.
Any questions regarding the opt-out provision? Alder Spate?
Could you just clarify the total impact on the budget?
Total impact currently?
On this policy change?
Yeah. We reduced the budget, not exact dollars, but it was $155,000 and $60,000. I think it was roughly $58,000.
Any other questions?
And what was Attorney Coles's position on the...
His opinion on it, he thinks we're okay.
Any further questions? All right, Mark, the Personnel Policy Manual regarding residency?
Yeah. I think we're just updating the personnel policy to meet the state statutes right now. We don't have a... Right now, with the Act 10, when the law was changed, there is no residency requirement unless you work in public safety or type of emergency management. So we're just updating the policy to equal what the state guidelines are at this time.
Questions regarding the residency change? All right, questions on anything in that? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Item 1B is consideration of Resolution 15-11-2057, amending the 2016 operating budget to increase pay rates for police lieutenants, brought forth by the police chief. Is there a motion for approval?
Yeah. There's a budget amendment that would address this, so I would like to table this and address it during the discussion of the budget amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor of tabling this item say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion tabled. Item C is consideration of Resolution 15-11-2054 as the adoption of the 2016 operating budget and establishing a tax levy, brought forth by the mayor. Before you... You should have a packet of amendments that Mark put forth, and we'll just go through as we do, take them one by one. The first is Budget Amendment 16-01, which is to eliminate $10,000 from the gypsy moth spraying program because the city did not qualify for the program. This is a corrected amendment.
Move approval.
Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion on this item? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Item 16-02 is to adjust the wages and benefits for the new administrator. This is also a correction based upon the actual contract that Ms. Little was offered. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Mark, anything you want to add to these corrections? Uh, no. Okay. Any questions for the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Item 16-03 is adjusting the transfer from the media cable budget of...
So basically on this one, the media that they're having, media communications, they're probably to reduce the transfer, and I did reduce it on the other side, so I have to make sure it's in balance.
Questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Item 16-04 is to eliminate expenditures for the additional firefighter slash EMT position from the fire protection and EMS budgets. This would also eliminate the fund balance from the ambulance fund, brought forth by Alders Wood and Spate. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
And second, Alders Wood and Spate?
I thought we needed to have a discussion about this because it's such a huge impact on our budget going forward in 2016 and beyond. And that was, you know, basically the reason also I don't like using fund balance to pay for ongoing operating expenses. for ongoing operating expenses, but it's like the chief is...
I would just like to make a comment too. I actually support the changes in the, or the positions that are being proposed for our community, but I don't think that we are going to be willing to make the cuts to other services next year that we will be required to make if we go down this path. And so I believe that it's responsible for us to be honest about the situation we're in financially and to consider immediately what is required to go to referendum to make sure that this community has the services that we expect and that we deserve. All of us have taken an oath to uphold the constitution in the state of Wisconsin, and right now, the levy limits put an extreme burden on every municipality. And I know my own business, I run a private business, we've probably seen annual expenses go up anywhere from 3% to 7%. I can't imagine living under a 0% expense cap or a 2% expense cap. I mean, healthcare alone, some years, goes up 20% over the last 15 years. But this city has been living under that cap, and the time has come for us to face the fact that we're not willing to continue to whittle away our public services. We were lucky as a community to have the Manona Drive Project. That project has allowed us access to transportation funds that prevented us from facing these difficult decisions in the last three, four, five years. And now we're facing the music, and that's why I support us starting to have this discussion.
Alder Thomas?
So there is, the first question comes, do we believe we need this position? And then the question is, do we believe we can afford it? And it is clear, when Doug asked the question of Mark about cuts for next year, the council stepped back and said, whoa, there's going to be a problem. And so we've got three years. TIP 2 comes online, if you go ahead and do the housing project, comes online in 2020. So the question comes, what are we doing six, and we can afford the position this year? So the question comes, if we add the position and we get $100,000 in cuts next year, how do we afford it? I mean, without, as Alder Spate said, taking something away. And there are some options, and the chief and I talked about this, and Alder and Honquist talked, we talked about some possibilities for the three-year period of 16, not, 17, 18, and 19. So first of all, there is about $100,000 in the fire department fund balance. We can take a part of that for each of those years, and that would help carry us. There is some state training funds that we can move some things around and have 1,600 to 1,800 a year for the next three years. And we, some of our ambulance conveyance fees are, are, we're limited in some of those because of the Medicare. But we, now I think we charge like $800. You could add $10 or $20, which is not much in the total percentage, and get another $4,000 to $8,000 a year. So for those three years, 17, 18, and 19, there is some one-time monies of $40,000, which would cover for half the position until TIP 2 comes online. So I talked to Mark about this, I talked to the chief, Brian and I talked about this. We think it is doable, and we don't have to step back, that we can afford to do it. And the point is, no, I don't know what hap, I mean, I think we can afford that and the pop, I think, I don't know where we go after this year, but I think that we can afford that one, and I think we need to afford it. So that's my...
Alder Thomas, have someone recorded these numbers that you just shared with us in terms of...
I've talked to Mark about it, the chief and I've talked about it, so...
So what is the, what is the dollar amount that Alder Thomas is referencing?
Well, there's no effect for this year. We don't have to do anything this year, because there's enough to pay for it this year. It is next year when we lose those transportation dollars, how are we going to cover it? And this will cover it for 17, 18, and 19 until TIP 2 comes online.
You know, there's, we do have, there is stuff that we don't compare, but there's always this. There is the out of town, we can lose that situation, like I said, it's 50, 60. I mean, so there's variables that we have to, so there's that.
But you were in agreement fiduciarily speaking that that would be an appropriate offset?
We can do it this for the first year.
For those three years?
We can carry most of it. There will be some changes. One, I think we probably will be a brand new health insurance plan next year. The way we look ahead, more or less thinking about it, we will have more or less be part of the exchange.
More self-insured, working to investigate that.
Similarly to the exchange, currently there will be some, similar to lower premiums because they have big insurance and deductibles. It's probably coming our way, it's part of the exchange, and there should be more premiums, and that would be one thing, probably coming our way than the other we don't see.
And just another comment, and I think Mark did this numbers, but I have the fire EMS budget history. And I'd like to note for the, for my colleagues, that in 2008, our fees for fire EMS was $157,000. For 2014, it was $338,000, which allowed us to, we were actually levying less, in 2014, we levied $135,000 for the ambulance service, and in 2009, it was 161. So we have, because we've had more calls, because we've had more efficiency, we have really gotten a good deal for the last, since 2009 in terms of paying for the ambulance. And now, folks, it's time to, I mean, time to pay for it.
I would assume the revenue is probably maxed out, so there's not going to be much more value covered.
I would agree. I would say we've kind of plateaued. It will most likely go up a little bit each year, depending on what we do for fees, whether we increase the fees or not, but I would agree that the ambulance revenues are going to plateau or at a very slight increase from year to year. From the fire department's standpoint, we look at, you know, we're trying to do what's best for the community, we're trying to do what's best for the firefighters, and we're asking a lot of the residents of our community, who are our volunteer firefighters, to take their time to get trained, get certified, and continue to respond at any and all times of the day or night, whether it's, you know, Christmas, a birthday, an anniversary. And we're asking them to do that, we've asked them to do that for the last 50-plus years for free. This year, we've given a little bit to, for the paid-on call program. But in the same, so we're trying to get more volunteers into the department, but at the same time, we will pay someone to mow the parks. They don't have to be certified, they don't risk their lives, they do this at scheduled hours, they're not leaving their families and special events at the drop of a hat. The pool, we pay lifeguards to be on-site anytime the pool is open. We're not doing the same, we're not affording the same to the fire department. We're not making sure that we have staffing at the fire department 24/7. We make sure that we have staffing anytime that the pool is open. So we're trying to make it safer for both the residents and the firefighters, to increase the department's capabilities, the safety associated with it, to provide the best service we possibly can for the citizens. I realize it's a very difficult pill to swallow with, from the budget aspect, but we go back to, we haven't added staffing with the exception of one position this year, which happened in the last couple of weeks since 1984. I understand it's tough right now to make the decision, but do we cut the staffing for our public safety when we're still providing, from the fire department's standpoint, mowing the lawns is a lot less critical than actually having staff at the department to protect the community as a whole.
Alder O'Connor, then Alder Wood?
I just wanted to clarify, Alder Thomas, we've talked about her proposal a little bit also, and you've, when you were talking about the funding for, in future years, not this year, it came up to about $40,000 per year. Were you planning on fund balance for the rest of that?
You know, I want to say I won't be here, I don't have to worry about it, but I, but I think that the levy can go up a little bit, there will be fund balance for that.
Okay.
Alder Wood?
Well, that was my question, I guess, more for Mark, I guess. If we spin down the fund balance, is, are we putting our bond rating at risk for that?
When it comes to the bond rating, they look at the general fund bonds, general funds, so she, so as long as the general fund stays within her policy, that's what the number one thing they look for, is that. As far as the EMS fund, they don't look at that as part of the bond rating, but you don't want it to be negative, I guess, but it will bring it down to zero over three years.
Bringing them to 0%?
For the ambulance funds, she's talking about zeroing that out for three, so that would be, three years will be, no fund balance left in there. I mean, that's, will be one of those things you'll look at, build it back up eventually.
Unless we, unless we bring in more receipts than we have budgeted for.
Correct, that's the, yeah.
How much are we over in, for the council going forward, planning for the cut that we're going to have next year? We are way over our policy amount for the general fund balance.
Correct.
How much are we over?
I think it's 25%.
So how many dollars?
Roughly 300.
$300,000?
$301,000, which is over the, our stated policy.
No, not 300 over. No, it's not over the policy.
No, it is.
Oh, over 20, yeah.
Over 20%.
Over 20%.
Alder Buss?
To use fund balance for ongoing recurring costs isn't responsible, and I can't support that. I don't care how much money's in there, because what happens when that's gone?
TIP 2 comes online.
Yeah, well, you're, and what happens, you know, what if? Healthcare. We had a nice reduction in our, we had a wonderful savings a few years ago in the cost of healthcare. And what happens if that disappears? To assume that we're going to operate the city by depleting its savings account, I can't support. We're going from six full-time fire, or paid, now we are at seven, correct, chief? And what this amendment is discussing is an eighth. And we've operated since 1980-whatever with six. We've got seven, which is good, it's the right direction. Last year at this meeting, we heard about how we couldn't get any volunteers. Blooming Grove shut down, and we had a growth in our volunteers, which is wonderful, brought in some great talent. I, I don't know, I'm struggling with this, but I, I cannot agree to using the fund balance to buy this down. What was the EMS fund balance supposed to be for? What was the, what were they saving for?
What are they saving? It's just they, it's just accumulation of their revenues over expenditures over the years. So they weren't really saving it for anything.
Oh, I speak for the chief, but I think they were hoping that it would be the basis for a new fire station that would assist in...
I was originally, when I came in, the fund balance was there, and that was one of the things that I was looking at utilizing it for, was to, whether it be a research committee to figure out where the station needs to go, or engineering costs to get the project running, but at this point, we need staffing more than we need a new station. Don't get me wrong, we need a new station, but we need personnel in that station is the big thing.
Alder Honquist?
Chief, can you speak to the value of the intern program for the hours where it's most effective or most beneficial, given the current staffing and the projected staffing, if an eighth came online? Because if I remember correctly, this would be for a rotation of two days on, two days off, from a 7A to 7P?
Correct.
Which covers the majority of our daytime, but then the evening time, it would be that third person is where the intern program fits best?
The intern program would help out there. That being said, this, the intern program, we're getting high school students, high school graduates, this is kind of their college years. They're learning, they're coming in green. It takes a year to get them through paramedic school. It takes them another year roughly to get them to where they're competent and capable on the ambulance to work as a second, that we can put them on, the ambulance is a second. As a third, or as a person, as a firefighter position, they are still very inexperienced, so they need to be behind an experienced firefighter or an officer. They're another body on, online. We have four brand-new firefighters that are volunteers right now, that's the same way. They're going through the training, but even once they're certified, that's just, they've gone through the schooling. It takes another, you know, lifetime to get, we're constantly learning, we're constantly moving, you know, learning new tactics. You don't learn how to read smoke from a classroom, you have to see it in real-life scenarios. And our fires have gone, gone down, the number of fires that we have have gone down. The number of calls, though, that we have have not gone down. We still have the CO calls, we still have the, you know, the natural gas calls, the canoes tipped over in Lake Manona, car accidents. So our call volume is still there, even though our true fire calls have gone down. That's, you know, that's great from a community standpoint. That doesn't necessarily, I don't want to say bode well for the firefighters, but it gives them less hands-on actual experience at that. but it gives them less hands-on actual experience at that. So, you know, it takes, it does take, once the interns, after they've gone through their three years, they're at that point ready to get hired at the department, and they've kind of gone through their, their basic training, their, you know, they've got their certifications, but by no means are they a seasoned veteran firefighter.
The reason I asked that was for a few reasons. One, how it fits with this, and the second, where I know the paid-on-premise, as well as interim program, often get plugged in as well. You have these people available to fill these slots, why aren't we tapping into that? And so, I'm concerned how all those different pieces fit together to maximize.
Going, and going back to, I mean, the full-time position that we're looking at, they're going to fill the driver-operator position on the engine. Eventually, with the plan that we've got set up 24/7. With the addition of this position, it will be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. At night, you can't bring in someone that is brand-new at learning how to drive, or how to become a firefighter, and then send them through driver-operator training at the same time. It takes years to get certified to where you can drive a truck and an piece of apparatus, because it's not just physically driving the truck there. You have to use, you have to be able to pump. You have to know all the equipment that's on the truck, how to start the tools, all of that to be considered the driver-operator. So, it's, from, from the, the intern's position, yes, it gives us another firefighter on the vehicle, but it's, it's a rookie firefighter. We need seasoned firefighters and officers on that truck at the same time.
Additional questions? Alder Holmquist?
So, I support having the eighth firefighter, however, with that, there is the ongoing concern about not only the next three years, but also the other recommendations from the ad hoc committee wasn't to stop at eight. And the reality regarding what you just spoke to is this is, this is only like the breakthrough piece, which I think we discussed last year at this point, when we put in the LTE position and said we weren't ready to commit to it, and we wanted a group to make recommendations and to look at staffing patterns and a variety of other options, including pairing or partnering with other local communities nearby. And I don't think we can, we can keep delaying the bigger question about what does the community expect when it comes to public safety and fire and EMS? And I believe they, they expect us to have responses and what are you going to pay for it?
The ad hoc committee recommended, as did public safety recommended, the addition of a firefighter in '15, which we added, one in '16, one in '17, and one in '18. With that being said, this budget only addresses the one in '16. I will have to be back here, along with most likely the rest of the department, to justify the need for the addition of another firefighter, paramedic in the '17 budget. Same thing in the '18 budget. So, by no means does this budget include that plan, and we're still going to need to justify that each and every year.
I want to clarify, Alder Holmquist's question, that was the recommendation, you'd said there was more than that.
No. Well, I'm saying that the recommendation of, so this one is just for the eighth.
Right.
The, the other pieces are coming back for these others.
Right.
If we would be limping between now and when TIF two comes off, the likelihood of next year being in the position to approve that is significantly lower than this year's.
Certainly, but again, I do, out of respect to the chief and the committee, the way this was purposely put, I mean, if the chief had his druthers, he'd be asking for the full cadre, and I'm sure everyone in this room would be supportive of not coming back next year, doing it now. But because of the pragmatism of the reality of the levy limits, it was set up, he knows he has to come back every year, which again, then gives you the latitude that if the sky is falling more, or less, that it can be done in the time. And although it won't be me in this position, three years from now, I feel most assuredly there's going to be options out there, as, you know, I think there is, just the economic hard realities that there's going to have to look for partnerships, and whether it's McFarland and Cottage Grove and, you know, I don't know what those will be, but your point as to, I think, you know, the dialogue has started, I think the ad hoc committee was a good first step, but I'll be shocked if there's not some stronger relationships between communities in three years by now, because this is a no-win situation financially.
Alder Thomas?
I said this to the chief today, and I will say it to all of you. I, it's very clear to me about the need for this position. Going beyond that and adding more, given our budget, you've got a lot of convince, and I think I'm, you know, I'm a big fan of yours, you've got to do a lot of convincing to me about the priority for that one, and a lot of data and a lot of information to justify it. So, so I, you know, my, my support for this position does not include, at this point in time, support for ongoing positions until there is, until I'm more convinced, and I, and I wanted to be honest about that, because I told the chief that today, and I said, you know, no question, but, but I'm, I remain, I, I need to be convinced about the addition of more bodies beyond this, given our ability to pay. And it's just an honest, it's my assessment, personal assessment of the situation.
Brendan's crunching numbers as we speak.
There will be no shortage of data.
Well, I won't be here, so it doesn't, you know.
Alder Spate, then Alder Wood?
A couple of things that I wanted to say. I mean, one is, I think we need to add to both the fire department and to the police department. We need more staff on our public safety departments. When I look at the entire budget for public safety, which includes, and correct me if I'm wrong, law enforcement, fire protection, and emergency communications, in the 2015 budget year, those items total 2.9 million dollars, and they constitute 53% of the city's budget. With the proposed 2016 budget, if we pass it unamended, that will jump to 55% of the total city budget at $3,700,000. Now, again, I think we need to make these expenses to provide the level of public services our community deserves. And I'll just say, for the purpose of next year and as we plan this year, if I were going to look at an area where I'd want to consider cost savings, I think we're going to have to look more carefully at emergency communications and at our 911 services, because honestly, that is a duplicative service. Do we provide a better service? Yes. Would I rather have someone answering the phone locally versus having the appropriate number of emergency personnel to show up at a crisis? I think that's a no-brainer. And the reality is, we've got to decide something that we're going to give up if we want to continue to provide other services, unless we go to a referendum. That is the reality of our current constitutional budget process. Prices are going up, salaries are going up, insurance and benefits are going up. We just had all those cuts with Act 10, and it was a cut that came, and now it's gone. And all of you in this room deserve to make a living wage for what you do, and that means the taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. So, something's got to give. And, I mean, I, I support this year's budget, but I also think we've got to be very honest about the situation we're in, and we've got to start working today to make sure that next year, everyone in this room is happy with whatever decisions we have to make. They're not going to be easy decisions.
Alder Wood?
I think every year, we say it's a tough budget year, but this, this year, and especially next year, are really tough budget years. We are going to lose a lot of revenue next year, in addition to having increased costs. Frankly, my, my preference would be to go to referendum. The fire department would, and EMTs would benefit, because they would get, however many positions were proposed, they would get them all at once. You wouldn't have to wait, you know, implement them over time. I mean, frankly, this is the toughest budget amendment I've ever proposed. I didn't want to propose it. I think I met with Brendan and Tamara after the last council meeting, and they made a good case for the need for the position this year. But frankly, I just, I mean, maybe we can afford it this year. I don't, we can't afford it. I'm not sure if we can afford it in 2017. We certainly can't afford to add any more positions under the levy limits. That's just the reality. I mean, we got less than a percent, 0.71%, I think, this year, increase in the levy limit, and it's just, I don't like it any more than the rest of us do, but that's, that's the reality. I do share Alder Buss's concerns about spending down the capital reserve, or the reserve fund to pay for operating expenses, but it's tough, and we are in a one seriously tough budget situation.
Alder Bussie?
Mark, the, how much do we guesstimate the transportation revenue will drop next year? And with what's in the pipeline for new construction, what percentage, you know, what might our, we want to know what, 1% this year, what might we be going up next year?
We will definitely, just based on our numbers, will drop the max amount for transportation, which is, we lose 15% of what it was from this year. I think it's eighty, eighty-four thousand, I believe, eighty-five thousand, which is what we'll drop in the new construction. It's a tough one, because we'll have trace online. Biggest thing, we have over a billion dollars in value, so the new construction has to be, just to get 1%, has to be over $10 million. So, that's our biggest thing, is trace that would be online. So, part of that's, we have a small portion of that, so we're probably only going to, probably get one, a little over 1%, I would assume, 1.2 probably.
And translate 1% into, how much our spending might go up?
So, it'll probably be about, almost, pretty close to the 80,000.
So, next year, it would be basically a wash.
Yeah, right.
We'd be, we have to live with the numbers that, similar to this year.
Yeah, but we're going to lose other funding as well, right, lodging, room tax.
Lodging will go down.
That'll only be about 18,000.
Yeah, that's a start.
Year for the first year.
Start of our drop, yeah.
That's going to be the least it ever drops. From there on, it's going to drop for six consecutive years.
By ever increasing amounts, going back to?
Five years.
Yeah.
Come back to the old ownership. I would think it's going to be very tough, to be honest, to add that. We would have to do a referendum, there's no way, without the cost, to add that new position in 2017 without a referendum. If some of these numbers do come true.
This probably would have been the better time to do a referendum, because the schools are going to be doing the referendum next TIF two, so there will be dueling referendums.
That's just being honest, it's going to be very tough.
I will be asking council to go for a safer grant, which is staffing for adequate fire response through FEMA, and so I'll be coming to the council to ask for a safer grant for the addition of those positions, which, those, the safer grants, Glenn, three years, it's similar to the cops grant that the city got years ago. This would push off, give a few years of leeway, but after the-
Thank you for your honesty.
After the three years, yeah, yep, after the three years, the city then would have to pick up those positions. So, that being said, with, I'll be asking for, to go, I have to have permission from the council to go for it, and so I'll be coming with a referendum to ask permission to go for that. That being said, doesn't mean we're going to get it, but we will be, I will be asking that we, that the fire department is allowed to try for the safer grant.
Alder O'Connor?
I will support, given Alder Thomas's working of the numbers. I would support the position for 2016, but I, I too agree that 2017, 2018 right now are highly doubtful. And I think we need to take, I don't know if we have a special committee or what, but we need to take a close look at all these numbers, what's going to happen in the future in the next few years, and where in the city we can look at possibly making some cuts, and I'm willing to talk about mass transit as well. I, you know, it's, and I think the dispatch, you know, I love to keep those things, but I think we at least need to take a look at them, because there's a lot of money involved there, and we need to, we need to know before we go into this in November next year, where we stand and what some of the possibilities are.
The plan was to do exactly that after the elections. You know, with the council and the committees, and dialogue's already taking place. The chief and I have spoken with county execs' offices, having dialogue regarding dispatch. First I've heard the transportation be bandied about, lawn mowing and things of that nature, but I think that's well said, well put, that it's a total, a zero-based budget, look at the whole city.
Alder Spate?
Well, I, I hope we will consider starting this process next week and not waiting until May, because frankly, budgets-
I've already started, as I've said it, Alder Spate, I'm, you know, what's going to start next week?
Well, I'm just saying, to put it off to the election doesn't provide the time we need as a community to be prepared for this process, which really starts in the summer anyway, budgeting. I mean, we, committees start voting on the final budgets for the next year in September. I'm just being realistic about the timeline.
I'm the one who's in all the meetings. Are you going to make these meetings if we're starting next week? I'm sorry. I'm in media, if that's the will of this body is to start these committee meetings next week, all right, I'm not going to attend. I'm doing these meetings, and it's more than enough time. I'm the one who builds these budgets with the help of staff in the summer. So, I'm sorry about the, no, we're not starting these meetings next week. I don't see a need to start the meeting. You know, the committees, you know, transportation should, you know, for each of your committees, you should be taking a look throughout the whole year. I've asked that of everyone, but no, I'm not going to, just because of tonight, we're starting a new set of meetings next week? I'm sorry.
I'm simply- I'm simply asking that we look at it sooner than the, the spring election. But if you're not open to it, you're not open to it. I would like to hear the will of this body with respect to that because I, I think we need time.
All right, does somebody want to?
And just the, the reason why some of the stuff does get pushed back is there's a lot of numbers we don't know until late and that's part of the problem.
Some of the numbers came in.
You know, we're going to, next year is going to be a difficulty. We're going to have the opt-out grievance. We're going to have the, you know, healthcare change and we won't know that right away. Unfortunately, some of the stuff unfortunately carries on until later. But like the mayor said, if the committees can look at their stuff ahead of time and look at stuff that they're going to do until they, you know, have some ideas with their want to cut and stuff like that, that'd be great. Unfortunately, a lot of times we don't get some of these numbers till later in the process.
I would love to have each and every one of you tonight say as your committee chairs that you are going to take a hard look at your own committees. What I find is the opposite, that committee chairs are protective of their committees. And, you know, they take great pride of ownership in their committees. And I get that, that's part of the process. But if it is the will, and again, I think Alder O'Connor said it quite well in terms of, we need to take a look at some of these things that we've been uncomfortable taking a look at through it. But I don't think we need to start more meetings next week to do that. We have the
Look, we have a new city administrator coming on board. We need to let her get a chance to catch her breath and, and set out a plan. I mean, there, there are going to be some challenges and I think that there are some things, if we're going to look at some big things. It needs to start in the summer or after the election. But, but let her get on board, let her meet with the mayor, let her meet with Mark, and let her put together a plan on how she's going to do that. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's that simple.
And that being said, I would welcome, somebody wants to take my place in some of these meetings? Hallelujah.
Oh, I'll, I'll come.
Okay. Yeah. I just haven't seen that be the case. And I'm not complaining about that because you're already on multiple committees. So it's not like you guys aren't doing meetings every night too, but. REAAX a little bit. We'll, we'll figure this out and the people here will participate and everyone's going to have ample time. So, any further questions on this budget amendment or discussion? Last call for any discussion. All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor, I don't believe there is a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize, yes, yes.
I thought there was
My bad. I apologize.
Spate?
Alder O'Connor?
Nay.
Alder Holmquist?
Nay.
Alder Thomas?
Nay.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Nay.
Thought I was going to get the vote. For the first time in five years. Could I have a recall? All right.
You can vote.
So the vote, the vote was ported to what? All right. All right, moving on to budget item 16-05 is to eliminate the fire slash EMS paid on-premise program brought forth by Alders, Wood, and Spate.
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion, second? Alder Wood?
Um.
Or Alder Spate?
Well, I think it's, we just covered most of the points of, I don't think we really need to rehash unless the chief wants to, has some things he wants to add about the importance of the paid on-premises program, which I agree, it is important.
This, this would allow for paid on-premise, which would be, excuse me, the, the current volunteers slash paid on-call personnel that we have to come in, spend 24 hours at the station and, and receive a small stipend. If it's a firefighter, they get $50 for the 24 hours. If they're an officer or a driver, they get $90 for the 24 hours. So it, once again, it goes back to giving the members of our department some form of compensation for the time that they're spending. I, the, the one thing going through this, we initially, with mayor and I, when we discussed this, this, this was actually the money that, the money that was going to pay for this was coming out of the ambulance fund budget, ambulance fund. So
And I think there's one perhaps important part with this. This is not a hard, fast number. This is just a pot of money provided. We're not making the volunteers do this, but we hope that this incents them
Correct.
To be there. So this may or may not be totally used.
We don't know if it'll
Yes, it's our hope.
Yep.
It's, it's a way for us to prove, this was one that was pretty important to me, to know, you know, I'm a big fan of the volunteers. And if this gets used, I'll be happy actually, but we don't know. And we've seen experience in some communities where it didn't, you know, it's not a huge
The initial budget number that I had for it, for the two positions, 24/7, 365, is 52,000. I reduced that to 35,000, which basically covers one of the positions. It covers the officer-driver position for the whole year plus a little bit more. So I did, and I did drop this because I don't think we'll end up with coverage 24/7, 365 with two positions. That would be my, my hope. That would be, you know, a huge benefit to the department. But this being the first year of the program, we don't know how much actual coverage we'll get. So I put it in there so that we've, we've got enough that we can cover the one position for sure and then move forward with that next year, once we've got a better idea of what type of coverage we're getting through this program.
Mark and Alder Bussey?
If we're going to use the strategy we talked about with Kathy, this was going to be used for the $35,000 in fund balance. So we can't use this fund balance up if we're going to use that strategy. So it has to, the fund balance has to be zeroed out. Once we zero that out, we will be over the levy limit with this one because it's a $35,000 increase to the property tax. So if we're going to keep the strategy of using that fund balance in the future, we'll have to zero the transfer out.
Alder Thomas?
And, and when I talked to the chief, I said, I think you have to pick. I think you have to pick which is the most important. And he said to me that if he had to choose, he would choose the full-time position. It's the only way I can see that it will work, that we can, can afford it in future years until we do the others.
So we're okay for this year, this coming year on this, but once that would be used?
No, no.
We're 35,000 over
We need to, so the last one was going to adjust the fund balance. So I would make this, if we improve this, we need to add to take out the fund balance because we're using that strategy in the future years. Right now, if we keep, leave it as is, we're reducing the fund balance by 35,000, which will take away a year.
Okay. Alder Bussey?
All right, I'm confused. Did you say leave it as it is?
We're leaving what's currently in the budget.
In the budget, but as the, let's talk about the amendment.
We can't afford to do the amendment and have money to pay for the full-time position in 17, 18, and 19. Because this uses the fund balance.
I think what, what it is, is this, the funding that was for the paid on-premise program was coming out of the EMS fund balance.
Yes.
We, when Kathy and I talked, we talked about using the EMS fund balance to pay for the one full-time position to supplement for part, part of the payment for the salary for the three years.
Choose.
She said, yep, and the mayor said basically the same thing in our meeting. If you can only have one, which one do you choose? I said, I would choose the career position because I know that's guaranteed coverage, whether it be, it's basically 53 hours a week. So I can guarantee that we'll, we'll have somebody, this program, I don't know if I'm going to have two people there 24/7, seven days a week, or one person there, you know, once a week for 12 hours or 24 hours. It's, I, we don't know, because it's a brand-new program, we don't know how much we would have for coverage on it. So the, the program is something that, when we, when the mayor and I initially talked, I didn't want to choose either because we need both programs. It's a way of supplementing the, the staffing in a less expensive way than just adding career personnel. It's a very good plan. That being said, we're in a budget crunch. If I can only pick one, I have to, I have to make the hard decision also. But I truly think this is a program that we need also.
So Mark, I'm sorry, I'm, it's not syncing in. The amendment I'm looking at is, if I'm reading it correctly, reduces, eliminates the POP program and decreases property taxes.
Correct. But will, we should amend that to take out the
The transfer.
Transfer. Otherwise, we leave that transfer in.
Amend the previous one?
So the previous one, on four, we were going to take out the transfer to general fund and fund balance being used since we haven't failed. That fails, that left in the fund balance being used of the 35,000 in that transfer to pay for. So I would not, I would recommend you amended to take out that use of the fund balance because if you leave it in, it's going to be 35,000 short. My share to start.
You've got out the expense and the revenue.
That's all right. So it's in net effect of zero on the levy.
So how would that modify this amendment? Instead of property tax, it would be fund balance?
Correct.
EMS fund balance?
Yes. And the transfer would have to be.
So there just needs to be
We don't need to do anything then. If this were, if this were wrote it down.
Right.
But then we're still cutting, how much is on the EMS fund balance?
100,000, so you're taking 35,000 out.
Alder Spate?
Well, a couple of things. I mean, we do still have a 25% general balance for our, for our general property fund balance. And so that, that's an issue that we're not yet discussing, but it's a very generous rainy day fund. And the other point that I just want to make, particularly with everyone here in the room, the council and the, and public safety community, the irony of all of this is that the POP program is the most cost-effective way to increase the resources of our EMS and fire protection.
It won't do, it won't do anything for EMS. It'll only do for fire. Yep.
For fire.
Yep.
So it's ironic that we're going to eliminate this program, which is a very cost-effective way to bring professionals into the firehouse to be there when there's an emergency. I just, that's my comment. I, you know, this seems very important, like we need to be cultivating these sorts of programs.
Alder Holmquist and Alder O'Connor?
I would agree, but it, it triggers the, the next discussion point, which is, where do you put these people? So that's a real, live thing that we talked about at the committee level of. We have a physical space that is not adequate for the, for the six, let alone the seven or the eight, plus interns, plus all the equipment. So we have a facility issue as well. And so although I think this is a worthy attempt to look at some different types of programs to bring in additional resources, particularly on the fireside, I worry about the, the ability to fill it consistently and our facilities to even attract individuals to fill it.
Alder O'Connor?
And that's partly what I was going to say, that yes, it's a lot more, it doesn't cost nearly as much money, but we don't know, we may not have anybody volunteer for it. Whereas with a permanent position, obviously you have someone there. So it's kind of, you're taking a big chance. If that's all you were going to have, that's, and I know that isn't, but.
I have a, I, I have the feeling that we will be filling the positions. I just don't know to what extent. Is it going to be 10%, 20% or 90%? I, I, I don't know that yet. We don't have a good, because it's a brand-new program that we have, we haven't tried before.
All right, hearing none. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussey?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Amendment passes.
Can I just clarify that? So that, do you want the transfer taken out and changed or you want that?
So we won't have the paid on-premise program?
Through the transfer, correct.
At all?
No, I meant
And to restore the transfer to zero.
I just wanted to make sure, I
Unless you want a separate amendment.
All right. Budget amendment 16-06 is to increase the Budget amendment 16-06 is to increase the police lieutenant's pay, brought forth by Alders, Bussey, and Wood. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in the second. Alder Bussey?
Um, when, I don't want to speak for Alder Wood, but when I looked at this, I, I looked at the band of what the market was on some of the charts that were provided to us. And in discussion offline, it's probably something we should also look at across the board rather than argue individual positions at the, at the council level, but have a, a plan on how we're going to be dealing with all departments and all wages so that they mirror where we position them in the marketplace. So, but from the information I had, I was comfortable with recommending this.
I guess I would like to add, I think we have done that over the years and we need to continue to do that. It's important, but I think, I know twice since I've been mayor where we've done a comparison of all positions for the staff to try, you know, I totally agree with you. Alder, Alder Bussey? Alder Wood? I mean, Alder Thomas.
We look a lot alike. You know, the, the problem I have with this is I could take a look at the fire chief or I could take a look at Dan or I could take a look at any of the city's staff, and if I compared them, they might be off-grid. And my experience is, we have done a grid of all of them and done a comparison. We haven't taken two out separately and dealt with them, done them differently because it will push them above and that it makes them other people off. And it doesn't seem to be the right thing to do, to do with two and not deal with all of them. So I, I have a hard time doing that. And I still, are, have we used the 14% in our budgets when we've given salary increases
I, we've never done that, but I don't know where that number came from. So that's something that, maybe at one time, it must have been a 14%.
I mean, the police department may have not, but I don't remember the council ever saying 14% is the, is the differentiation between the two. I just don't ever recall that. And we bumped up the sergeants, then we now, we bump up the lieutenants and so the fire chief makes less than the lieutenants and it, the whole grid is now off-sync if we keep going in this direction. And so I think we need to deal with them as a whole.
I think it is going to stay off-sync because there's this fundamental I think it is going to stay off-sync, because there's fundamental pay measurements by department that are handled differently. As I go through admin, staff, I don't look at it the same way as the police department looks at it. The two lieutenants, I mean, it just, you're paying for the title, and there is some experiential measurement there, but it's based upon position. And not the case in the admin side, where, you know, it's how many years, what's your edu, you know, there's a lot more breadth that goes in unless we come up with a uniform way of looking at that. And then the secondary thing is, it's always going to be, and I, I don't know a better way, but as you compare, we always say, can you compare Mark Paul's data from comparable communities? So, we're just chasing the last city's raise, and we don't know what thought, process always went into why the parks department administrator in that certain community got a 30% raise. Well, all of a sudden, that becomes the mark on the high end, and we always try to keep our employees above the median in that. But we're chasing other communities all the time in that payment. So, I don't know a better way of that, but I think we're never going to have within our own city, because mayors handle with the input of the city administrator wages differently in the admin side than...
Doesn't the council have something to do with salaries?
Yeah, you approve, you vote on them, yeah.
Well, I just wondered if we've got the, I mean, we used to look at a grid, we used to look at comparables, and we used to compare what other communities paid and what, what the range was. And we didn't, I mean, Brian reminded us that, you know, a few years back, the rec department director came in, I think, for an increase for missy, and we said, we won't deal with one separately. We will deal with it as a total. And, and, and we took it away from the, the city administrator, and we, and so I just think that this is a process that steps out of what our normal way that we do things is, and that it sets a bad precedent, and that's my opinion.
Well, we set the precedent last year, because this started, this would not be here today, but the sergeants, we moved the sergeants, which tightened the gap.
Well, so I made one mistake, I don't want to make two.
Okay. Alder O'Connor?
A piece of that, what we did, was, I think, a different proportionality. It was someone that made less the day after they took a promotion than they did the day before.
Correct.
So, I think that's a little bit different than someone still having a percentage that is different than the position, that the gap has just narrowed some, so I...
That was the reason, but that's what's triggering this tightening.
Yes.
So, whatever the reason, we did it last year, is now exacerbating this one. So, it triggered this.
And despite me individually supporting even the previous individual discussion when it was around our missy's position, I wanted not to increase that at the council level for the process piece, and I, I feel similar about this one, although I, I support looking at the percentage increase and what's appropriate for that. I just don't want to also go around the process of a way in which I think it should be done.
Okay. Further discussion?
I have one.
Yep.
Because I had to make that correction for the cable, or the media fund, and actually, this budget amendment would put us over the levy limit by $1,800.
Okay. Even with taking out the last paid-on-premise?
Yeah, that was a no effect, because we did, we took that out of the transfer of fund balance.
So, we're 18... Yes, chief?
Can I just say a few things?
Yep, please.
Just to let you know, the, the police salaries for sergeants, lieutenants, and I suppose the chief too, they all start at the bottom with the patrol officers. And when they get, you know, over the last three years, basically, they got a 12% raise, and during that same time period, non-reps got 7.5. So, that created a 4.5% gap, and that's what we caught up with, with the sergeant's pay earlier this year. That was brought up in, in budget discussions for years. We weren't allowed to talk about it. It never even made it to the council. It finally made it to the council earlier this year, and, and we, we were able to accomplish something. Our goal is to promote from within this police department and also retain those people. So, if we're not going to reward them, or at least create the gaps, so that they get some adequate reward for taking on that additional responsibility, there's a good chance we're going to lose the people that we promote, and that's the whole purpose behind this.
So, that wasn't the mayor's fault, as was said earlier this evening by one of the speakers? Kept that under the table? One thing I might add, though, I don't think we have lost a police officer, so, you know, I'm pretty proud of this community and the support, and I'm proud of this department that, so, I don't think people jump ship here easily, because I've not seen them jump ship ever. Alder Bussie?
So, if, the information that was shared, when the amendment for this was brought to the council, had us, this position ranked ninth out of 12 communities in, in the study. Our sergeants were, I think, around six, so right in, right in the middle. So, how does, how do these different positions, how are they reviewed so that they're competitive in the marketplace? Because I guess in my, my opinion, any position, somebody could look at what, they could go to these different communities. And if we want to be in that middle or above middle, how do we, how do we assure ourselves that we're there? If we don't pay that?
I haven't figured that out, because there's always a circumstance in another city that precipitates some change, but I'm not totally aware of why or how they decided to pay some people.
And, and Alder Wood, I guess, if we're going to be 1,800 over, that's not the intent of this, and I don't want to do that. So, I would do a front, if I can do a friendly amendment to my own amendment, but to adjust this to 12,000, would that put us, or we're within our guidelines, Mark?
Are you making a...
Yeah, 12,000, but I don't know how that would, maybe we're 12,157 on the levy, right?
So, if, so if this were reduced by $1,900?
Right, so I don't know if you'd reduce the salaries and change it by kind of retirement or change, depends where you want the salary number.
I'd want the credit to be 12,000. You'd have to do the math.
Okay.
Are you making that as a motion?
Friendly amendment to the amendment?
I'm okay with, I, well, I want to ask Mark a question first.
Go ahead. So, even with the, the $8,900 adjustment in this, the new city administrators' pay, and there's another transfer?
The transfer is a zero effect. But, so we had three to pass so far.
He's talking about seven, which we haven't got to yet.
Well, if you take seven, it's a totally different story.
Right, so if that passes?
Then you're, then you're...
Then we're...
Right, so if you want to skip that one, come on.
That might be a good idea.
Would you be okay with that, Alder Bussie?
To come back?
To seven and come back to this one?
Sure.
All right, why don't we do that? All right, so we're temporarily tabling, I guess, that one. So, we're moving on to budget number seven, 16-07, which is to pay for the university project with fund balance usage. These projects are one-time expenditures. Total amount to the fund balance reduction would be $30,000, brought forth by Alder O'Connor. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion, second. Alder O'Connor?
I guess that's essentially why I brought it forth, because they're one-time expenditures. And at the time, there's also thinking about ways to cover the fire physician, but that might free up a little bit of money.
Questions, discussions on this point? Hearing done. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving back to item 16-06, we have a motion to increase the police lieutenant's pay. Discussion. There was the start of a friendly amendment you desired to continue?
Nobody seconds it, it's dead.
Okay. Is there a second friendly amendment to reduce?
Well, I don't think it's necessary now, is it? I mean...
It would be under...
Sounds like he still wants to make the...
No, it's not necessary.
You don't? Okay.
He's pulling it.
Okay.
Alder O'Connor? What percentage does ha, does this have to change for the, on page two of the previous? Is this to do additional 9.91? It looks like it might even be beyond that.
Sorry, didn't hear, we gave, we gave you, like, four different options there. So, if you're looking at the sheet, the lower-left corner, cost to the budget, the gap, to go back to a 14.4% gap, it would equate to a 9.91% raise in 2016. To just have a 12.7% gap, you'd have to raise it 8.3. To establish a 10.4% gap, it would be 6.1. And to maintain the six point, right now, they're in a 6.6% gap, I believe, that would just be with a 2.5 raise in 2016. So, the different amounts were there, but it doesn't have all the tax and things like that, that Mark would have to establish. The 14.4 gap had the $11,897, which was in the, the budget proposal. But they were all just there as guidelines for your, for your decision.
And so, you put that in as a worst-case scenario?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Or, did, did Alder's Bussie and Wood ask if they wanted to go to 14.4?
That's what it was put in.
Because they asked it? Okay. All right. Were you done, Alder?
Well, it, it speaks to the other issue of, when you look at the market study that was done here, the middle here is 12.7. Goes back to, I think, that magic question of, like, where on earth did 14.4 come from? It seems like, it seems like it's more of a policy issue in the larger set of, how is it that you determine non-represented wages in comparison to representative wages as they increase progressively? And if it's by a fixed percentage, it seems like that should be established as a policy, rather than moment-by-moment basis. I'm struggling with that piece of putting something in place that could be nice if it was more...
And I think with the new administrator, with Mark, we could take a look at trying to refine our grid again, and I think we would do that anyways, but try to really come up with, and then, as you say, determine what's policy versus what's merit and what's negotiated with representative, representative employees. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes carried. Mark, you want to do the summary for us?
We got to vote on the budget.
Yep.
Sorry, Alder O'Connor, did you vote, may? Thank you.
Guys, could you put up Mark's screen on the monitor, please? And can you bring up the summary page?
So, the actual...
And can you make it as large as you can for the mayor's old mayonnaise? Can we budget for 65-inch monitors next year? What, about two feet in front of it?
Yeah. So, we end up, the actual total property, city property tax levy is $6,284,685, increase of $431,930 from the year before. Actual increase is 7.38. Vehicle $128,135 levy, which can be carried forward for the future years. We do not lose that.
How much under?
28,135. The actual tax rate per thousand is 6.309490.
So, the infamous, what's it mean to my tax bill on an average house?
$111.59.
Which is the biggest in my five years, so...
With this budget, before, we will qualify for the expenditure restraint program if we, depends if you guys end up changing it, but which will increase, we will get some aid. It's usually, it's usually been a small dollar, but we do get some money, we qualify for it.
Which goes to what?
The general fund. There's no, it's not, it's just, what's in the conference, but it comes next year.
Alder Spate and Alder Wood?
So, Mark, I want to ask the hypothetical question. If we were to move to apply $100,000 of our fund balance to pare down this property tax increase, what impact would that have on these numbers?
Just use $100,000 worth of fund balance?
Yes.
Put $100,000 in there.
70,000 is 20 bucks.
Very much. It's a under, we did it.
So, if I move this number, this would be, this would be $130,000.
Remember what you changed? So, that this is...
Sorry.
Down to 84,000.
Start over.
$84.88.
And what percentage does that put us at for a...
God. What's it say at 5.67?
But, but as far as the fund balance, it keeps us at, like, 23%?
23.3.
Alder Bussie?
Well, I'm sorry, Alder Wood was first.
Well, I was going to raise the same point, I guess, but we, in the past, we've used that to pay down the debt service, applied it to debt service rather than the levy itself, which, I don't know, for 6.1, I have another...
Do you have a preference in terms of fiscal management, Mark, between debt pay-down versus tax pay-down?
It's always better to say it's used for debt service, transferred to debt service for bond council. I do prefer to...
Alder Bussie?
I just, rainy day funds come in handy in case there's, say, some environmental issues that need to be dealt with, that are unknown. So, maybe we just leave it alone.
Good point.
This might be a good year to do that.
Well...
Yep. Alder Spate?
So, not to belabor the issue too much, but if we were to try to apply it to our debt service, is there any way to do that at this point and look at the impact on the property tax levy? Because, I mean, if we end up having to deal with an environmental issue, which then leads us to potentially borrow money, then, you know, we'll be borrowing money then, but if we can pay down the debt and still have a, a positive impact on reducing the, the levy increase, I think that's, I'm equally open to that option. I just, it's hard to know.
Well, if you transfer to...
It'd be a little smarter in February, which is prior to our borrowing, other than the fire truck. Do we have to borrow fast this year because of the fire truck?
Because of the fire truck.
So, we're going to do our borrow when?
February, so we can get that, pay that fire truck.
January.
January?
We're going to go through all of it.
When do we have to give you a check?
January 31st.
Jan 31st.
We'll have it on, we'll have it on the January agenda.
We won't have strands initial research on potential contaminations before... We won't have strands initial research on potential contaminations before. Before, oh, February, I think.
February, that is supposed to be right around there. Well, she had a good idea.
Any further questions?
Was my question answered? Sorry. Is it possible for us to?
So you want to, do you want to transfer a hundred thousand dollars to the debt service fund, is that your question?
Well, I'm curious to know what impact that would have on the levy. Is that something you can't plug into your spreadsheet there?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Take out that hundred. You did not.
I did, I did.
Can anyone read those?
Yep.
I can't read them. And I have glasses on. Well, I can read some of the letters, but.
So do you have the hundred grand in any more above, right? Thirty thousand is now a hundred and thirty, or not?
Well, thirty thousand was already approved, so it's.
You took that out right away.
Yeah. So I just added a hundred thousand, you said a hundred thousand, correct?
Right.
For the debt service.
Yeah, so I transferred that to debt service.
It seemed like, though, you went back to one thirty in the.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
It was thirty and then he made it one thirty.
Well, that'd be taking out the fund balance, so I have to reduce the fund balance by the hundred.
Because we approved taking thirty off our adversity.
Oh, got it, got it.
So it's a hundred plus the third.
Yep. But you're applying it to debt service now.
Yeah. It would be the same number, it'd be the same eighty-some. Number, yeah, just. So just, it would be the eighty-four dollars.
So the impact on the levy is the same?
Yes.
That's, I think, what Alder Spate was getting at.
I would like to propose an amendment to apply a hundred thousand dollars of the general fund balance to reducing our debt service.
Oh, actually, no. No, I missed, well, you're going to pay off additional debt, so you're going to actually have another expenditure. So it actually has no effect. So you're going to, you're going to have an extra hundred thousand dollars within expenditures.
Yeah.
So you have no effect on the actual levy.
Aren't you going to reduce your interest?
Well, you would, but you would, when you borrow, you just reduce.
The amount you're borrowing.
Borrowing, you're borrowing, and if like, we're borrowing in February, that will come online into two thousand seventeen, I think it's a year. And we are going to refinance, and there will be one that we could reduce there, will affect a little bit of the interest, but it's not going to, I don't know what those numbers would be. And that won't actually have an effect into two thousand seventeen, too.
It's always better to reduce debt, I guess, as a ten, but in terms of it having a wow factor, it doesn't, but it does help with the bond rating, I mean, I don't know if it helps the bond rating, but it speaks well when we're trying to get rid of.
They like to see it, I don't know how much.
They like to see it, I don't know.
I don't know what it really.
Alder O'Connor?
I'm hesitant to take any more out of the fund balance right now, if we're talking about using some of that in coming years, in the gap years, to cover the firefighter position, plus we have the, we don't know what's happening with Winnequa Park. And we did already take thirty thousand, so, did you say that there's about three hundred thousand that would take us down to twenty percent?
Right.
So that'd be, we'd be at almost half if we took a hundred now.
Alder Thomas?
I'm inclined to agree with Mary, but if I were going to take it, I would take it to reduce the levy, because having that much extra in the fund balances, we overtax people. So if we're going to do something, we ought to use the money to reduce their taxes. So whether, I mean, and this is the largest tax increase I can remember in a really long time. So if you could get it down, if a hundred thousand.
Mayor Call, but. Mayor Call had bigger ones, but.
Not, I don't think we had bigger than seven point three two. But it's a long time, so, so if we take a hundred thousand dollars, what percentage does that drop us to?
Twenty-two percent.
How much?
Twenty-three percent.
Levy percentage?
Oh.
Five point something.
Five point.
The effect on the taxpayer, if you have this in the range of this house, eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
No, but percentage-wise.
Percentage-wise would be. Five point six seven.
So if I were going to do it, that would be my choice, and I guess I would look to the mayor and you, whether you think that we will need that money next year to cover the, and until tip two comes offline, if we do it, then I think we can justify it if we are trying to maintain a level of services. And we'll need that for three years until tip two comes offline. If we don't, I think we, my personal view is that it's, we took too much and we should give it, we should not continue to take so much.
But my one concern is the opt-out. We are going to have a, we know for sure, we have agreements filed for the police department.
We're on the ground with it, so I don't, he's doing what he needs to say.
I mean, that's my, if we lose it, then you're losing sixty thousand right there, so that's my concern, I mean, that would be my concern of that.
Our policy is fifteen to twenty percent, and twenty percent is still, we're not going to come anywhere close to getting down to the twenty percent, which we consider our maximum, and I completely agree with Alder Thomas, like, this is, this money has already been collected from the taxpayer, and we're essentially saying, we're going to continue to collect it and keep this big savings account, and I just don't think that that's responsible, and particularly within the context of a legitimate, potential ask for a referendum to pay for the services that we were discussing tonight.
So, okay, so I.
Hold on, Alder Wood first, then Alder Thomas. You're done, okay, Alder Thomas?
So I move that we take a hundred thousand out of the fund balance and use it to reduce the levy.
Motion to take a hundred grand of the fund balance and place the levy that has been seconded, is there discussion on that amendment? Alder Bussie?
There's been some concern about the size of the increase. The size, I mean, from this time, with this budget, we will have added two full-time firefighters. So if there's a question, why did it go up? That's your answer. So, again, I, we don't know what's going to come out of the ground, or have to come out of the ground, so I say leave it there. And if we're concerned about why the big increase, that's your increase. And if people object to that, they can file papers with Joan and be there for the spring election.
Further discussion? Alder Spate?
Well, I mean, I generally agree with you, Alder Bussie, on, I mean, I, you, your prudence with respect to the city's purse is much admired, and I just think that it's, I think either way here, we're going to be doing good by the taxpayer and being responsible, and I think we've made some tough decisions tonight, and I, you know, but I am thinking about all the people on fixed incomes, I mean, and I, I don't think we are risking the financial solvency of the city by giving a little bit back, I mean, that, you know, it all adds up, and I'm certainly willing to, to take that little chunk of our savings and apply it.
Further discussion? Going once, screen twice, gone, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder, on the amendment. Alder Bussie?
Nay.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Nay.
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
The amendment passes. Mark, we want to repeat that for Kevin, so he makes sure he has the paper exactly right.
The levy is six million one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-five, total increase of five point six seven percent. The rate would be six point two zero nine zero nine five. Increase of three point four four percent per year.
All right. Again, I want to thank you, Mark, for your work, and just so the public knows, it's Mark's job to bring up the caution flags, and, you know, it's not that he's taking a position, per se, on any of these items, but he has a fiduciary responsibility to this body and to the city to just make us always aware, and I think he does it very, very well, and I appreciate his way of doing it and going with the flow, but still trying to keep us as smart as he can for the future, so thank you very much, Mark, on that. If we vote on this budget now, we'd do it half the time that Pittsburgh talked to veto their entire budget, so let's move on. So we will then go back to item V one C is adopting the two thousand and sixteen operating budget and establishing a tax levy, is there a motion for approval of the two thousand and sixteen? Motion for approval? Operating budget?
Who was the first?
It was kind of a tie, so.
Oh, I'll take the second.
All right, Brian's the second. Alder Spate? Alder Homequest? Discussion, hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
The budget has been approved, and the next question everyone asks, Mark, is when do they get this Christmas card in the mail?
We don't even have the county levy yet, so, and I assume it's going to be at least the second week of December.
Second or third, even to the third week of December?
Yeah. This is probably the quickest week, because of the dates where they fell, this is the earliest that we ever improved it.
All right, I want to thank staff, too, for their work in preparing and being unnoticed for questions, and thank you for everyone who turned up to speak eloquently towards what needs to be done. Do you have any data that we're working? All right. And we will take a look, you know, I think it is easy to lose sight after you get done with this heavy lifting to, all right, take a breather, so we won't breathe too long, Alder Spate, I promise, but, you know, remember what we went through here and some of that angst, and if we can prevent it for next year, that would be great. And I know some of these amendments are hard to bring forth, and Alder Wood, I commend you for putting your neck on the top of your block for a while, so, thank you. Okay, moving on to item two is new business, two A's.
Sorry, Mayor, there was that issue of GB, of the unfinished business, and did, there was no action taken, is that just tabled and done? No, it wasn't even tabled, it was just.
Oh.
Yep.
Wait, there was an amendment in the budget.
Yeah, so there was a budget amendment for that, so we'll just.
We tabled it. We tabled it, right?
Okay.
We did, we adopted the budget amendment for it.
Yep, okay, just making sure it didn't get skipped.
Okay, yeah. Disappeared. Item two A, you'll notice start for immediate action is consideration of two thousand fifteen, sixteen, class A liquor licenses for Speedway. Do we need to take these one at a time?
No.
Can we do them both?
Sure.
All right.
Spend the rules and take items two A and two B out of order?
Motion to spend the rules in the second, take these items out of order. Item two B is consideration of a class A liquor application for cider only for Speedway also.
Move approval?
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Did we vote on taking them out of order?
No, we didn't. So there's been a motion, a second, to take these items out of order, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, is there a motion for appro, there was a motion for approval?
Second.
And there's still a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items have been approved. Item two C, also start for immediate action is consideration of resolution fifteen dash eleven dash two zero five eight is the authorization to a single source the purchase of a new fire engine brought forth by the Public Safety Committee. I will note earlier this evening, personnel and finance approve this. Is there a motion to suspend the rules, take this item?
So moved?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Homequest, be here at time, so there's motions.
Second.
Chiefs and assistant chiefs.
Basically, what we're asking for is the permission to go ahead and move forward the purchase of our new engine, and by doing so, using a sole source. We have a time constraint, as I made the council aware, January thirty-first, new standards going into place, seventeen thousand dollars, seven hundred forty-dollar increase to the truck, no other changes for us, and we really gain no benefit out of its things that are required. The vendor we've chosen is the one we bought our last three trucks with, this vendor has experience and patented equipment that we can allow to make it work for us and fit in our fire station. Our ladder truck was of the same kind of design, we had to have it's certain configuration so it would fit in the fire station, and Pierce being the vendor that best met that need. Matter of fact, last Friday, I went to Baraboo and looked at a very similar engine, their fire station was built in nineteen fifty-eight, and is very similar in configuration to ours, and their truck serves them very well, it would be pretty close to what we're looking at. Pierce, like I said, they have some patented things that makes this truck fit our needs, and our goal is that in, by purchasing this truck and our future engine that gets replaced in two thousand twenty-three, or scheduled for replacement, with those two new pieces of equipment, we can eliminate our squad. At that time, that squad would be five years old and would be due for replacement as well, so I think we're being proactive with our city's tax dollars, and we're trying to expedite this process to get it through.
Two points that came up at personal finance, one is Pierce is a Wisconsin manufacturer, we have great experience with it, and when asked if, to make sure we're doing our fiduciary responsibility of not shopping this around the country, the chief's answer was?
I believe completely that it's, because it's a customized truck, that the other manufacturers would be very similar in price, they may have some minor savings, but craftsmanship. I actually spoke to the individuals that do the work on our truck up in the forest, and they work on every type of fire truck that's in our area, and they by far, they see the savings in purchasing a purse in the long, or purchasing a Pierce in the long run because the manufacturing, the craftsmanship is so much better, you save in the long run on maintenance.
Alder Homequest?
The simple piece for me was, when you're in an emergency, you want to operate on motor memory, this allows us to have things in the right location, so you don't have to think too hard when you're in an emergency. Enough said for me.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck, guys. Item two D is consideration of resolution fifteen dash eleven dash two zero five nine, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement for operation of an impaired driving task force for two thousand fifteen slash two thousand and sixteen, brought forth by Public Safety Chief?
This is the intergovernmental agreement that, that sort of lays out the rules and how the task force works, this is our second year participating in it, last year, it was sort of a last minute thing, and this never came before the council, but twelve, there's a total of twelve communities that are involved with this, I had attorney Cole take a quick peek at it, but I did caution him, please, please, don't find anything.
I had Attorney Cole take a quick peek at it, but I did caution him, please, please, don't find anything wrong with it, because there's 11 other communities that have already signed off on this. The big thing is that by, by participating in this, in the task force, you are, and the, and the agencies are coming into your community, it's the same as mutual aid, so they have law enforcement authority in your community, but unlike mutual aid where the host community would be responsible for any expenses, it goes back to the employing, the employing agency is responsible for their wages and managing their grant funds and things like that, and it goes into compensation for officers. It talks about what would happen if there was disciplinary action or criminal defense costs. Lawsuits, legal fees are all covered, and those would all be costs that would be, in some cases, they would be, the responsibility of the employing agency with the potential for reimbursement from the host agency if insurance policies covered it. There's also a, the end of term on this, on this contract is, or the agreement, I believe, is October 1st of 2016. So that's what this would...
What's the difference between impaired driving and OWI driving?
Really, there's no difference. One would be operating while intoxicated, one could be, it could be under the influence of drugs.
But if you're under the influence of drugs in the task force, the OWI task force, which we're picking up next?
You could still be arrested for it, for sure.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes? Any reason not to suspend the rules on this?
I don't think so.
Want to suspend the rules, take this item out of order?
Second.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, take this item out of order, and it's been second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Mary? Alder O'Connor, seconded that. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, chief, go get it.
Thank you. So this will allow us to participate?
In the next one. Which leads us into item two E is consideration of resolution 15-11-2060 approval of participation in a Wisconsin Bureau of Transportation safety grant titled 2016 Capital Area OWI Task Force, brought forth by the police chief and Lieutenant Weigl. I miscalled him a sergeant, that... Bet you'd make more money, maybe. Welcome.
Thank you. This is a $10,000 traffic grant. It's done in partnership with the surrounding communities. It's the same grant that we had last year, it's just about twice as much money, it's $10,000 this year. The cost sharing is 25%, and that's $2,500, and that can be paid for out of benefits and fuel costs.
We've done this successfully for multiple years. Yes, Alder Bussey?
Move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order?
Suspend the rules, take this item out of order, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, approve this item. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Reports of committees, is there anyone on staff that would like to share anything? Chief, chief? No? All right, we'll start this way. Alder O'Connor?
Landmarks Commission meets Wednesday at 4:00, and Sustainability meets Thursday at 6:00, at 7:00, instead of the normal 6:30.
Alder Spate?
Transit Commission will be meeting on Wednesday night, and will be moving forward with our ongoing marketing plan.
All right, Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Homequest?
No report.
No report.
City clerk?
I got nothing.
Acting city administrator, finance director?
I don't have a report, but I just want to say, this is my last time up here, and I'm very happy.
Why?
April will be here, starting at the next meeting. I just want to thank the mayor and actually the city council to make this a very, a very easy transition. The mayor's put a lot of work, I don't know if you know, into what's been going on lately. They've helped me out a lot and staff a lot, and I also think that we got a great staff. Just want to thank them for making this a very easy transition, and I don't think you notice much change because staff is great and the mayor showed a lot of leadership through this time, so just want to say thanks.
Quite welcome, and I like the staff so much, stay tuned to the newsletter, this, if we can fit 10 pounds into the 12-page. I had so many nice things to say, I don't know what the editor's going to do. The only thing I have to note is, in the new business front, there's a ribbon cutting at 11:00 AM this Friday at Qdoba, if you haven't been there, for Mexican. House Brews is open with their 60 tap line. I did some investigating there with research.
House of Brews or Mr. Brews?
Mr. Brews. What did I call it?
You said House of Brews.
Oh, okay, no, that's on Helgason.
Yeah.
There's too many brews going on.
You got someone going to B and D, huh?
And I don't have an update on the Asian Fusion Restaurant at Frostwoods yet, but they seem to be working diligently on that, so... That's all I have. In the appointments section, we only have one this evening, which is Andrew Petro to the Mass Transit Commission effective immediately. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move adjournment.
Is there a second? Chat? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.